Matt Kaiser.
Present.
Keith Perkins.
Here.
Richard Brooks.
Here.
Brad Fredette.
Present.
Ken Hilton.
Here.
Anthony Jones.
Here.
Okay, first order of business will be appoint Mr. Jones as a voting member.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Hilton here would rather vote.
Very well, Mr. Hilton will be the voting member then.
And on that note, I guess I'd like to be excused if there's no conflicts of interest among the board.
Very well.
Okay.
All right, first order of business, approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 4th, 2023. What would the board wish to do? Mr. Fredette.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving minutes, raise your right hand. Five zero, the motion is approved, the minutes are approved. Old business, any old business that may come before the board? Ms. Crosley, any old business?
No old business.
Any old business from board members? Okay, so you know, we'll move on to new business. Item three alpha. Kurt Stalsmith is seeking a variance from table five A1 to allow the expansion of a front porch to be located within the 15-foot side setback on a property located at 15 Maple Street in historic moderate-density district. Assessors map 11, lot 131, ZBA case 15, 2023, HTC case 30, 2023. There is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Crosley.
As indicated, the applicant is seeking to expand an existing porch from a five-foot wide porch to a 10-foot wide porch to be three feet into the 15-foot setback, making the structure 12 feet from the property line. This applicant did receive historic district approval for the proposed expansion of the porch, which they reviewed, obviously, the aesthetics of the porch. Your purview here is the encroachment into the setback where they're looking for a variance for that. There are no prior zoning board or site plan applications found related to this property, and as mentioned, they did receive the certificate of appropriateness from the historic district. One of the conditions of that application was that they needed a variance to do it as proposed. They have addressed all five of the variance criteria, and the board has jurisdiction over variances and can move forward on this application.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Crosley? See none, will the applicant please come forward? Explain to the board why we should, why the variance should be approved.
Hello, I'm Kurt Stalsmith. I am the property owner. I'm looking to expand the porch due to its current functionality at its current dimensions. It can't really be used for too much. I'd like to be able to expand it so that I would have more use for that front yard space and be kind of more involved within my neighborhood. So that's why I'm looking to kind of expand the porch from its current dimensions.
Okay, could you please just go through the criteria so we can get that into the minutes?
Sure. You want me to just read from my application essentially?
You can read from your application, you can expand upon it, do as you wish.
Sure. Facts supporting this current request. Current structure already has a portion that comes within 12 feet of the side yard at the back portion of the house. So I would be kind of keeping it within the current footprint of the house. It would increase appeal and functionality of porch. Granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest as variance would not create a clustered appearance due to the adjacent property having substantial amount of space from property line to other structure. Explain how literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Functionality of current porch is limited due to restricted size. Repose use is reasonable one because only expanded porch with an established footprint of house. Explain how granting the variance would be substantial justice, increase property values for surrounding properties. Explain how the proposal is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance due to large amount of space between surrounding structures would not clutter the appearance of neighborhood.
Okay. Anything else to add?
I have no further to add on my own.
Okay, so what we'll do here is we'll just have you step aside, see if there's any butters that want to speak either for or against, and then have you come back up, answer questions from the board. Probably won't have any butters, but what you at least have to ask.
Sounds good.
Any butters who would like to come up to speak either for or against the applicant? Nope, don't sit down, I'm telling you, it's gonna be much. Just step aside, come on back up. Questions from the board? I have a question for you. Okay, so the existing structure, in the back of the structure has an item that sticks out, is that into the, right into the setback?
Yes, it is. It's to the exact same, within 13 feet of the other property line.
So that's within 13 feet of the property line? The existing porch is how wide?
Existing porch is about five feet wide.
And you want to make the new one?
About 10.
About 10, which would, the intent is to line up with the existing?
Back portion, correct.
Okay. Further questions? Mr. Fredette.
Yeah, so criteria three always seems to be the hang-up for this board. What is the hardship specific to this property that distinguishes it from other properties in the area that would make granting this variance reasonable?
So like, I'll put it in more layman's terms because it's usually said, so what it's saying is what's different about this property such that the zoning as it applies to this property is unfair? So how is it that this property shouldn't have to meet the zoning? That's kind of what the questions, that's the words they're using. That's what he's asking.
The current side yard next to the house is kind of useless for any use, honestly. There is a lot of shade over it, not much plant life can grow on it, I can't really get lawn. Its overall appearance is just unappealing based on the usefulness of that yard. So expanding the porch will hopefully get rid of that portion of grass that's unable to grow and really be useful for anything curb appeal-wise.
Mr. Fredette, what is the total, what is the total encroachment that you will be into the 15-foot setback?
It should come about two feet into the encroachment.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant, any other questions?
I have.
Mr. Hilton.
The, maybe I'm thick or something, but the width of your, it's the depth of your porch is only five feet deep. How wide is it?
Sorry, it's width, that's a good question, obviously, off the top of my head. I don't think I have the exact measurement of the actual length of it along the side of the house. I would imagine it's probably about 20 feet length-wise, I think. But that, that's an estimate, I have no real idea off the top of my head.
Okay.
This is a wraparound porch, right? It's on the front, and we're talking is the wraparound, the portion on the side. So you're saying it goes 20 feet back from the front of the house to where that addition is?
If I was going to, yeah, if I was going to guess, that would, that would be my estimate on its length.
And then the, across the front of the house, it will go from side to side of the house, from?
It goes from about midway on the front of the house and then wraps around from there. So it's about halfway within the front facade of the house.
Okay, and what you're proposing is that it will go out 10, it's five feet now, it will go 10 feet out, and then on the side of the house it will be 10 feet also?
The front portion will not go any further than the current five feet that it is extended. I don't plan on coming much closer to the street. I just want it on the side portion to be expanded out into my yard, essentially.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hilton, might help you, on the second thing of the staff memo, they have a picture of the house?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
I'm sure you saw that, right there. The bottom picture kind of gives you a good visual of what it looks like. Mr. Brooks.
So I guess my question is, explain how the granting, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Obviously, the setbacks are put in for numerous reasons. I mean, I've kind of read up on these because we've had a lot of people ask about setbacks, and, you know, I guess the best way I can sum it up is they, they're intended to keep a buffer between buildings, safety-wise, you know, prevents the spread of fire, allows access to the rear of the building should emergency services need to come through, so on and so forth like that, as well as aesthetics. I mean, there's lots of reasons when you delve into this for why it is, and obviously, different towns, different zones have different setbacks. So I guess it's kind of two parts because it's both the hardship and contrary to the public interest because obviously, everybody around there would have to have the 15-feet setback. So what makes yours special but at the same time not contrary to the public interest of having these setbacks?
I don't think I understand the fairness of the situation for everybody else who then doesn't allow the variance on their property for like a 15, within the 15 feet. I think, again, I guess my kind of overall hang-up with the porch is just making it functional. It being as it is, there's no real use for it. So I would hope overall that the expansion of it would allow more presence of whoever's residing in the property to be more present in the neighborhood necessarily, being out on the porch, utilizing it. I guess somewhat, I'm a little hung up on the hardship part of it as well because it's not exactly a hardship that my porch can't get larger. So I don't know if I have a great answer to that question, honestly.
Like Mr. Fredette said, it's commonly the hardest thing to prove, and, you know, obviously, if it's an odd-shaped property, that's usually something to play into it. You know, looking at this, it's pretty standard properties around there, so. Just my thoughts on that, I guess.
Other questions for the applicant? Final comments by the applicant?
No further comments, but my.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I'm going to close the public hearing, open it up for board discussion. Mr. Fredette.
I will say that for me and my time on this board, there are times that I really think I want to grant a variance, and.
Can I ask you to pause just a moment? Because Meyer, we need to discuss regional impact.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Nope, we always.
Mr. Brooks.
I'll make a motion, I move that the variance request for Kurt Stalsmith does not have potential for regional impact.
We have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion on regional impact? All those in favor of the motion which says it does not have regional impact, raise your right hand. Pass is five zero. Mr. Fredette, you can continue.
My time on this board, there are some times I can think of that I really think, you know, my gut tells me this is reasonable, I think it's practical, it's something I like to do, yet I would like to do, and I just, I can't see the hardship. And that is, Mr. Brooks pointed to it, that oftentimes we look, this board, some of us, most of us have been sitting here for a while together now, I think, together as a board, we often look at the shape of the property, size of the property, frontage. There's nothing substantially unique about the shape or size of this property, the location of the building on the property, not unlike many others in the area. I just, I think, and then I think I have to look at, from my perspective, what is the ask? And I think here it is a porch, but it is a porch in part because it's a historic building and a covered porch, and I think the risk here for me, while I do think about every case on its own merits, this is in some form a deck. And I think we run the risk as a board, or let me put it this way, as a board member making a decision, I am very mindful of the fact that we have to think about how, I have to think about how a decision I make may impact future decisions, and I just think allowing somebody to expand a porch into a setback without a very, very, which, a porch we call a structure in this city, which it reasonably is. I think the bar for me to allow a structure in a setback has to be higher than this, unfortunately.
Okay. James Perkins? Nope, okay. Mr. Hilton.
This is, this is one of those things that continues to come up all the time that we keep, to me, the hardship is having to come before this board. That's because it's just, you know, if he'd have built that porch and not said anything, no one would know anything. But he's coming before us, trying to do what's right, trying to obey the law, asking for a variance, that's a hardship already, right there. And, you know, it just, it's hard to fathom. One of the candidates in the city, on city, going for city council is that we have become the city of no. And I'm telling you, you know, when honest people come before the board and try and ask for something, and we keep saying no to them, then we need to change these, we need to change these rules and make it easier for folks to obey the law, because they're trying. Okay? So I would vote for the variance because he's trying to do the right thing. Okay.
Yep, further comments by board members? All right, looking at the criteria, I don't think the application would diminish surrounding property values, I don't think, it's really, like you said, the other structure is quite a distance away from it, so I don't think it really infringes upon the other structure. Though I also, on the other side of it, don't believe that you can use other people's property as your buffer. The variance is not contrary to public interest, there is no negative really to the public besides maybe, maybe some access. It does substantial justice, it gets the applicant a usable porch, he has, you know, five feet is probably a small porch, it's probably hard to do, it gets a more functional porch. Spirit of the ordinance, it really adding, would adding that porch change the characteristics of the neighborhood? Probably not, because, probably because the neighboring property is so far away, but if you start putting things together, and if the other neighbor, if the neighbor built, then your things become tight. We get to the hardship criteria, to be clear on the hardship criteria, it's not that the person is a hardship, it's that the zoning ordinance as applied to that property unnecessarily creates a hardship. I.e., what is special about that property that the zoning ordinance doesn't seem to apply the right way? A common one would be a pie-shaped property where the frontage requirement isn't met, but the property can be, but the building can be put back and still have plenty of space. That'd be a common example of how, in this case, the applicant unfortunately couldn't demonstrate that the property has any unique characteristics that unfairly apply the ordinance to it. So unfortunately, in my mind, we can't grant the, we can't grant the variance, in my opinion. Mr. Brooks.
I certainly understand where Mr. Hilton's coming from on, you know, zoning in general is a hardship to everybody. I mean, once you start placing setbacks, you're taking a section of everybody's property that's no longer able to be used, essentially. You know, of course, they can use it for a driveway, a walkway, just not a structure. So, you know, we don't set these things, these were set in our zoning ordinance years ago. Maybe they're outdated, maybe they should be changed, but that's not our decision. We have to base this on the criteria that we have to meet based on state law. And again, I don't see the hardship, the public interest, you know, kind of wishy-washy on that one, I could go either way, but, you know, obviously, when they set these zoning ordinances, whatever reason they had for it, they decided 15 feet, and 15 feet's pretty standard. I mean, some places have larger, some places have smaller, but most of them seem to be a standard 15 feet, or at least a large majority in this city. So, again, I just, I don't see the hardship coming into it. You know, he is able to enlarge it out to the setback, he'd probably gain three feet, I'm guessing by my math, so end up with an eight-foot wide porch. You know, maybe that's enough for him, maybe it's not. But it would certainly be allowed without a variance. But again, I just, I don't see the hardship being met here.
Okay. Mr. Fredette.
And, and I'd like to piggyback off of and agree with what Mr. Brooks said, but also, I mean, I think we have to think about a 15-foot setback in a quarter-acre lot. I mean, there are a lot of lots in Summersworth that are this size or even a little smaller in neighborhoods. And, again, I, everybody has a different opinion, but I think everybody's opinion of what is reasonable for a setback is also different when it's their property or somebody else's. And to that point, I think, as Mr. Brooks said, I think 15 feet is not uncommon, nor is it unreasonable.
Further comment on the application? Mr. Hilton.
If he wanted to put up a, just a, a junky plastic storage shed right on the neighbor's yard, he could do that with no, with nothing. And he could mess up all kinds of stuff in the neighborhood, and that's okay. But if someone wants to make their property better, we're going to stop them. I just think that that's, if he's coming before the board trying to do something on the up and up, that's, he spent his time, he's done, that's a hardship, in my opinion, so that's.
It may be a hardship, but it's not a hardship for the criteria of the zoning ordinance. So it's just a difference. Mr. Fredette.
Many years ago, when I came to this board, Shanna Saunders was the planner in town, and I said, you know, Shanna, I'd like to help out. And she said, well, are you more a strict-to-the-rules kind of guy? Are you more of a thinking outside-of-the-box kind of guy? And I said, you know, I'm kind of a follow-the-rules kind of guy. And she said, you know, if you're between, if you're a out-of-the-box kind of guy, I'd push you towards the planning board. If you're a follow-the-rules kind of guy, I'd stick you on the zoning board because you will generally, you will be asked to apply the five criteria to each and every case. And that, I think, is our job as a zoning board, is to look at it strictly through those five criteria and accept those criteria as what they are, which is the ordinances in this city.
Okay. Rather than debate too much about the ZBA purpose is, that's fine, that's good, it's a good discussion, just trying to keep it to the applicants, because the applicant's waiting to hear. Any further comment or discussion on this application? With that, the chair would entertain a motion. Mr. Brooks.
After, yeah, after review of the application, the file, and all the information presented to the board, I feel that the hardship criteria of the five criteria have not been satisfied. And I move that the request for Kurt Stalsmith for a variance from table five dot A dot one to allow the expansion of a front porch to be located within the 15-foot side setback on a property located at 15 Maple Street be denied.
The motion, we have a second. Second by Mr. Perkins. Discussion on the motion. Oh, the motion, okay, the motion is to deny the variance. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries four to one, the variance is denied. All right. Item three Bravo on the agenda. Drew Serbin of Burr Signs on behalf of Forget Management LLC is seeking a variance from section 19.20, and this is the, is this the one, it should be 19.20 Charlie, three Bravo, right? 19.20 point three, point Charlie, point three Bravo, and 19.20 point D four to allow three directional signs greater than four square feet and 277.35 square feet of wall and freestanding signs on a property located at 285 Route 108 in the Commercial Industrial District. Assessors map 47, lot eight, ZBA case 16, 2023. I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Crosley.
Yep, so the applicant is seeking to install 277.35 square feet of a mixture of wall and freestanding signage, and in addition, three directional signs that are greater than four square feet. Directional signs are typically exempt from the calculations, but they are required to be four square feet, so they are seeking a variance to have, allow those to be larger than. We did give you information regarding, they had submitted a sign permit, how we calculated what their base allowance was. Their total signage allowance based off of the ordinance was 146.80 square feet. They had received a variance in 2003. This was to allow for more than one freestanding sign where only one is permitted, and a freestanding sign that was greater than 16 feet. And that sign permit was approved. They have addressed all five of the criteria for the variance application, and it is ready for your review.
Okay, so just for clarity, so the second thing, sign says that the, install a 220-square-foot sign. So what are they, so bottom of page one, your memo?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm a little confused, on a total signage allowance is 140 square feet, is there existing signage 220 square feet?
Based off of the documents that were associated with their prior applications and that they provided for their sign permit that they were doing, indicating what the existing signage was, it calculated out 220 square feet. The variance did, there was discussion from the 2003 variance whether or not it was required. At the time, staff did not feel that a variance was required and did approve the permit based off of signage of that square footage.
Okay.
But at the time, at this time, their request is to allow for the 277 square feet. And a copy of what they are looking to install has been provided with the application.
Other questions for Ms. Crosley? All right, see none, will the applicant please come forward? State your name and tell us why we should grant the variance.
Brendan Porjay, one of the owners there. After looking at the variance we asked for, we have gotten with Nissan as far as what we can cut out, okay? This is a financial commitment we've made with them for the signs, based on the 220 that we already have, we are looking to, we have seven signs currently, to chop that down to three. So on the, what's that diagram? We talked to Nissan about getting rid of B, G, E, and F.
Hold on, page, are they on, go ahead, go again?
Page four.
Yep, page four.
Yep, so it'd be B, G, E, and F, which every sign I take down is a loss in revenue from Nissan, but they wanted us to get rid of Summersworth, which obviously, been here for 25 years, not an option. So our variance now would be 215 compared to the 144 we're allowed. Keeping just the pylon, Summersworth on the building, and the tablet sign to go over the entryway. It's quite intimidating here. Usually, I'm on that side.
All right, so you eliminated B, E, G, and E, B, E, and G, right? Did I get that right?
No, B, E, F, and G.
F and G, okay.
But, you know, getting rid of Nissan, but the other signage has it on it, so.
Your, for clarification, E isn't, was indicated as an interior sign?
Oh, well, all right, whatever, the two reader boards that are over the size.
F and F, you talk about F? You talk about the one that says service, exit, and express?
Yep.
So you're eliminating those?
Just getting rid of those.
You're getting rid of F?
Because obviously, we applied for it, and I understand rules have changed, so we want to keep the stuff that's important.
So, to be clear, so your variance, and Ms. Crosley will help, and we're going to, she's going to work through this, is so you're no longer asking for a variance for the directional signs because you're not going to put them up?
No.
And your total square footage would be 215 square feet?
15.38.
Excuse me?
Point three eight, yes.
215.38?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which would literally cut it down to three signs with just Summersworth, the Nissan tablet above the entryway, and then obviously, the pylon sign. Which would literally cut it down to three signs with just Summersworth, the Nissan tablet above the entryway, and then obviously, the pylon sign.
Okay. Are you clear on that, Ms. Crawley?
Yes, so it is just the Summersworth and Nissan. The big red Nissan.
Correct.
You're keeping Summersworth, and you're keeping the big red Nissan.
Yep, and replacing the pylon sign.
You're clear?
Yep.
Would actually decrease us by seventeen square feet.
Right. So, now I'm gonna ask you to go through the criteria on why you meet the criteria to get a variance.
All right, as, as far as a hardship, we have to stay competitive. Other dealerships, Dodge being built, we're making a significant investment in the dealership to make sure that it's up to date. Because like many people, you see a McDonald's that's been redone, one that's not, and going to the one that's redone. So, as far as the signage, there are other dealerships in Portsmouth, Sanford, that, that have this new stuff. In Sanford, they already have this. So, it puts us at a disadvantage if we're not current on the, the marketing that ties directly to the dealership. Because the signs we have now are the old emblem. These are the new, which correlates to the advertising, new signs that match what they're putting out in commercials. Oops, sorry.
That's all right.
This is the sign guy, I'm a-
I'm not trying to, just trying to make, keep you full opportunity. I, I'm at a loss a little bit right now myself, so.
That's all right.
Well, we had, had gone for more than what we should have.
That's okay.
And that's where we wanted to come to say, hey-
You can change your mind as many times as you want.
Well, yeah, because, no offense, we're way over what you wanted, and we wanted to cut out the stuff we didn't need. The reader boards, we don't need those. I need the name, Nissan, sign telling us who we are.
I, I think, end of the day-
Say your name, just, just for the record.
I'm sorry. Uh, Drew Serbin, president of Burr Signs, who's actually the installer, doing the, doing the actual work of it.
You had to stay kind of close to the mic, unfortunately, if you want to talk.
Um, I, I think, uh, he's gone over the hardship a little bit. Um, I think the, uh, the fact that the, um, that the variance was approved in, applied for and approved for considerably more signage than, than what is allowed in the code to begin with back in two thousand and three. Um, there were very specific reasons why, um, the variance was allowed at that point. And the fact is, it's a unique building, it's unique to its, to, to what it, to, uh, to its purpose. Um, the property itself, the actual land itself is unique. Um, and so because of that, it needs additional signage on it to be effective. It's not, it, it's not the kind of building that would be appropriate if it didn't have as much as was, was put on it. Um, and the, I know in our application, there was, I think, two hundred and twenty-two feet of signage, but there was actually three hundred and three feet of signage on that building. If you include the, uh, the monument signs, the pylon sign, and all of the building signage that was there, we're not even asking for close to that. So, that's, that's, that's the, uh, the argument that I would make there, and the fact, and the fact that the town and this board has already seen fit to put more signage on the building, uh, considerably more than what's been applied for here originally when the building was built.
So, I'm gonna ask, is there any, a butter, what's, just, you guys can just step aside, any of butters that would like to speak to this? Oh, I do have a gentleman that wants to speak, so if you guys could just step aside?
My name is Ethan Clark, I'm a resident of Summersworth. Uh, I also am affiliated with Summersworth Nissan. Um, I think, uh, may, uh, additional reasoning as to what would be helpful with the signage is how the property specifically is set, um, especially on Route 108. We are one of the only properties that is actually set down from Route 108, where many of the buildings are actually at either road level or closer to it. Um, our building specifically, especially if it's not winter time or anything like that, with the new Goodwin building that was built a few years ago, and also with the property that we have maintained to the, the lot adjacent, or next to us. Um, in the spring, summertime, it's very hard when people are coming in through 108, and to diminish the signing would make our presence even less known. And I, I would be in full support of the signage being granted by this board, and would really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for, against? Each gentleman, please come back up. So, I'm gonna repeat the question, just because I'm trying to get it through my brain. Okay, so the, it, it, the property currently has two freestanding signs, right?
Correct.
Okay, your proposal has one or two?
Just one.
Just one, just what you call A. So, the other freestanding sign goes away?
Gonna be removed.
Okay, so that, that, that makes it more clear to me. All right. The, we'd eliminate, so the, the, on, on our picture structure, the C sign, which is a small Summersworth sign on the side, that's gonna stay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and-
Board one, right?
What's that?
Those are board one, Summersworth. That one.
Oh, I make, don't judge.
Sorry. I don't like, those are board one to us.
And then-
Been very good to us.
The D sign, which is the Nissan sign on the side, the, of the new Nissan stays.
Yep.
And the Nissan E is, E, you said, goes away.
Yep.
Because you, you thought that was an interior sign, right? Correct? Or that, it doesn't matter, it's going away.
It's indicated on the-
Okay.
Interior, um, interior-
It is.
Signs are not calculated.
I know, I know. It's not calculated as part of their wall and freestanding signs.
F's going away, which is the service signs, and G's, the word service is going away.
Yep.
Okay, so, do we really have just two signs here, C and D? A, A, C, and D?
Yes.
That's correct?
That's it.
Ms. Crawley, you agree with that, that, that assessment?
We're going from seven that we have now to three.
Yes, that's how I understand it. The Summersworth sign at thirty-six point one eight square feet, Nissan freestanding sign sixty-eight point ninety-eight square feet, and the Nissan sign, which is the red, um, placard, um, one, at a hundred and ten point two-two square feet, for a total of the two fifteen point three-eight square feet.
Correct.
Yeah, just making sure, because we're trying to be-
Sorry.
No, that's all right, that's all right. It's a good challenge for us. You're really challenging us.
Keep going on your toes. I just got this today, so.
That's all right. Mr. Fredette?
If they already have two hundred and twenty square feet of signs, and they're going to two hundred and fifteen square feet of signs, do they need a variance?
One second.
I was gonna ask the same thing, because I, I thought it ran with the land.
Seventy-one point one eight.
Maybe not.
Well, maybe, but you may be grandfathered to the two hundred and twenty point nine one square feet. Okay, you may be grandfathered, and, and that's, you kind of threw us for a loop there, and that's what you-
All right, about ten?
So, um, the way that, it, loss of legal nonconformity, um, indicates in the sign ordinance, um, in section twenty. Um, so it says that the nonconforming, let me make sure I'm reading the right part. Yes. So, the nonconforming sign is removed and replaced with a new sign where the new materials and supports are constructed, unless the new sign is dimensionally identical in all aspects to the nonconforming sign. For example, if the nonconforming sign is eight feet wide by four feet tall and twelve inches deep, mounted on eight-foot-high, twelve-foot, twelve-inch by twelve-inch support, then the new sign must be the same exact dimensions with no proportion of the sign varying in any dimension from the nonconforming sign. Um, so that's under, um, that illegal nonconforming sign shall become illegal sign and must, which must comply.
Eighteen point twenty point-
C, A, eight, A, um, three.
Nineteen point twenty, C?
Nineteen twenty, C, eight, A, three.
Three, gotcha.
Page, my page eighty-four.
My page eighty-nine.
So, if it was exactly the same size as the prior Summersworth, and, um-
So, to be four point oh, we need to grade the variance.
Got it.
They would need a variance.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, questions for the applicant? None, huh? All right, final comments by the applicant?
Um, I guess I would just say we were proud to be in Summersworth and continue doing business here. We've been here for twenty-five years, and want to be here for, for another twenty-five. Also want to continue to improve the dealership, be involved in the community, make sure that people, when they drive by, see, uh, see a building that we're all proud of, you know? So, very important to me and my family that we're putting a product out there for consumers, as well as ourselves, that is the cutting edge and what, what needs to be there. So, you know, that's, I think, is, I don't make any of that out of- We're trying to reduce signs.
Yep.
Want to make it better for everybody, but also support Summersworth, because, you know, it's been very good to us, so.
All right, thank you very much. Have a seat. I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I, we understand, I tried to, we tried not to-
Very nerve-wracking up here. I don't know about you guys, have you stood on this side?
Discussion by the board. Mr. Hilton?
It would seem like that if, that if he's reducing the, the size of the signs, and it's been that, that he should go ahead, I, I would vote in, in favor of this, because of, it's reducing the size of the signs, and it's also, but it's making it better in the long run, so. And we're, we want businesses in Summersworth to stay. We don't want them going out of business, so.
Brooks?
So, I don't believe we can get this information to look back at why this was granted in the first place, but like Mr. Hilton said, we are looking at a reduction in what he would, had already been approved with. Obviously, you know, we're moving signs up, removing signs, replacing with updated ones. The fact that he's, in the same time, reducing it, I kind of feel like, you know, we should honor the old variance for whatever reasons it was. I don't think we have access to that readily accessed, and you know, whereas he is reducing it, I don't see a problem with it. Obviously, it's not been an impact or detrimental over the years of being there as it was, so I guess I would be in favor of this one.
Mr. Fredette?
I'm gonna come down in, in favor of this one as well, um, for all the reasons already mentioned. I also think the applicant made a point, and a valid point, that it is a unique property. It does sit fairly far off the road. It is a automotive dealership. I think literal enforcement of the sign ordinance here would arguably create a safety hazard, because you need to kind of see the building as you come up to it. And I think the level of signage that's there now is, is adequate. You have an applicant who's done his diligence to try to stay within it to the point that it's reduced a little bit. I, I think this is reasonable.
Mr. Hilton?
We didn't do the regional impact.
You are correct, we did not do the regional impact. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that this does not affect, would, it would not have regional impact.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Second. So, the motion is that the signage variance request by Drew Serbin, Serbin of Burr Signs on behalf of Forget Management LLC does not have regional impact. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes five-zero. Continue our discussion. Thank you. So, looking at the five criteria-
I am a rule follower, you know?
What's that, sir?
I am a rule follower.
Um, yeah. The signage value, does, does it gonna affect surrounding properties and properties, the, the value of surrounding properties? No. Variance not contrary to public interest? No. Substantial justice is done? Yes. Spirit of the ordinance is observed, does not change the characteristics of the neighborhood. And, and the uniqueness of the property actually is pretty simple, is he already has, the uniqueness is, he already has an approved variance or approved thing for greater signage. So, and he's not even going to that, so that's, that's, that's why the, not applying this variance would be, kind of not do substantial justice, be wrong. Now, we need to modify the approval notion, though. See, I'm, I'm gonna read what it should read. It should read, after review of the application, I'll make the motion, actually. After review of the application, the file, and all information presented to the board, I feel that all five criteria have been satisfied as discussed, and I move that the request of Drew Serbin of Burr Signs on behalf of Forget Management LLC for a variance from section nineteen, let's see if we get it right here. Is this, this is, now I got it wrong. What's the, is it still nineteen twenty-three C Bravo?
Uh, no, that is, I apologize about that. Um, it is going to be-
Nineteen twenty delta four.
It's the, yeah, it's in the denial motion, I apologize, um, for making a mess of that variance. It's the nineteen twenty D four.
So, section nineteen point twenty point delta four for two hundred and fifteen point eight three square feet. Is that good, or?
Can you reference the, um, sign specs?
What would you like me to reference? Which signs, A, B, and?
A, C, and D.
As described in, for signs, A, C, and D.
Okay, that's better.
In the Summersworth Nissan sign package dated July twelve, twenty-two-three.
Sure. So, signs, if I got, A, D, A, C, and D, correct? A, C, and D, as described in the Summersworth package of wall and, of freestanding, wall and freestanding signs on a property located at two eighty-five Route 108 be, be, be granted. All I've done is we've basically, what I, my, the motion is to approve the signs as presented. We have a second. Second by Mr. Brooks. Mr. Perkins. Discussion on the motion. So, the motion is to approve signs A, C, and D. Are you all set, Hannah? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, variance is granted. Moving on to item three, Charlie. Miles Adams is seeking a variance from table five A five to allow the construction of a deck to be clo- located within fifteen-foot side setback on a property located at one hundred and eighteen Indigo Hill Road in a residential slash single-family A district. Assessors map oh-three, Lot one forty, ZBA Case seventeen twenty-two-three. There is a public hearing. Ms. Crawley.
Okay. So, um, the applicant is-
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Applicant's proposing to construct an eight-by-eight addition to an existing deck. Um, this would be within the fifteen-foot side setback. There are no prior zoning board or site plan applications found related to this property. They have addressed, um, the five criteria, and the application is, um, ready to move forward for the board to review.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Crawley? Ms. Crawley, would this be considered a nonconforming structure, since it doesn't have the required signage?
Let me review.
All right, we can get back to that. Applicant, please come forward, state your name, and why we should grant the variance.
Hello, everyone. My name's Miles Adams, and based off the criteria so far, I'm just running down the list. Explain how the proposal would not diminish the surrounding property values. I actually would do the opposite. If my home value goes up, then, uh, my taxes go up, and town can then use those taxes to make the town better. That makes everyone's property value goes up. Explain how granting the variance should not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, I think the town obviously needs to be surrounded by people that want to grow the town, when they just, um, approved that thing on Elm Street, I think, a hundred and fifty units, so the town obviously wants to grow, and that's not gonna happen if we continue to say no to things. Um, I'm surrounded by Vietnam veterans, small business owners, police, former police chief Dan Donovan, uh, families. So, I wouldn't do anything that would contrary their, their, their lives. It's just not who I am. Explain that little enforcement, um, would result in unnecessary hardship. My property, if you go into my driveway from Indigo Hill, is actually a pretty steep hill. So, if it was flat, like a normal property, I could just build a patio there. I wouldn't actually need to build the deck in order to use it. So, if you go in, my house is here, it goes all the way down, so currently, I can't use that. It's just a, it's just a dirt hill. Looks pretty bad. So, when I first moved in, there was a staircase that went up to, to nothing essentially, so I ripped that out, because it looked bad, and it was kind of, it was honestly genuinely pretty dangerous. So, if that is gone now, I could then build the deck. I wouldn't have to use my backyard, which is just more driveway. And, yeah, so right now, that kind of is annoying to the other neighbors, because they actually have to go down the stairs, put the grill in the backyard, because it's, uh, on the, on the driveway, because it's at a slant, and I have to slide the grill all the way to the middle. It's loud, it's annoying. Um, proposed use is a reasonable one, same thing like I just said. Explain how the granting the variance would do substantial justice. I'm a disabled veteran. I have, uh, I had brain cancer, I got medically discharged, so I have, like, I'm partially paralyzed on the left side of my body, so going up and down the stairs, nor to use the grill, is kind of annoying. It's a lot worse if I put the deck where it proposed to be. It's only about ten feet versus going up and down the stairs of the driveway, which is about fifty feet in chain walk. So, it just would make it easier for me. My wife, new wife married two weeks ago, she has, uh, type one diabetes, so she has arthritis, so going back up and down the stairs is kind of hard for her. And the spirit of the ordinance, in my opinion, is basically just be respectful to your neighbors, and that's really what I'm trying to do here. It's inconvenient right now for me to have to go up and down the stairs- It's inconvenient right now for me to have to go up and down the stairs. It just, it's, it makes it harder for everybody. I just think this isn't really that unreasonable request, because my current neighbor, who's the only one that could actually see it, who I share the driveway with, share the driveway with, she, uh, she doesn't care. There's no one here to abut it. They all wrote some letters that I'm sure you have that support it. Some of them texted me before I got here tonight, said good luck, so I think overall, I, I just would appreciate some support from the board, because I would like to have them, and I just think it would be a nice improvement to my property.
Okay. Well, have you step aside, see if anybody else wants, anybody wants to come up and speak? Anybody like to come and speak for or against? Nope, come on back. Long walk. Questions for the applicant? So, looking at your house, are you, you right now off, you have a front door and then you have a side door?
Correct.
So, off your side door, how big's that deck right now?
That side door, that's kind of a sun porch area that came with the house, and in front of that is a, an eight by eight deck that I built that was approved, uh, about a year ago, and then now I just want to build, but that's just kind of enter the house, I couldn't put a grill there because it's all vinyl and it would just burn, burn the side of it, so I want to build an eight by eight deck to the, next to that, so I actually used that for, kind of just basically just hanging out, put the grill there. And again, it, right now, it's just kind of an ugly hill, I can't really do much with it because it's mostly dirt, so I'd put the, put the deck there, I could try and grow something underneath of it, but it just would hide just the general ugliness of what it currently is, and it's surrounded by six five, six-ish foot bushes, I'm about six five, and I can just sort of see over the top of them, so you can't actually see the deck except the neighbor who is directly next to me, S J, and she doesn't really care, she actually thought it was kind of a nice idea. And currently, her stairs, I believe she probably got grandfathered in for this, they would be the exact same distance away from the setback variance that my deck, proposed deck would be. So, it's already currently happening, and it doesn't seem to bother anybody.
Okay. And do you have a back door to your house?
I do. It's, um, so if you go down, so where my house is, you can probably have the diagram of it, you go down the driveway and then take a left, and then there's a small door, it's honestly, it's only about five ten, so I have to duck pretty heavily to get inside of it. So, now I have to go down the stairs from the kitchen, down the stairs through the basement, through that door, and then to the middle of the driveway where I have to put the grill, because again, it just kind of slides if I, the food will slide off of it if I don't put it in the middle. And, so yeah, that's how I currently get into the house.
So, there's no door on the fir, on the, normal work, on the first floor to your backyard?
No. It's a, it's pretty, it's about twenty feet in the air. Like, if you go down the hill, where my kitchen is, where that light would be, um, where I could, it's twenty feet down, so I couldn't put anything there. And if it was, if the driveway was just flat, I could just build a patio there, this wouldn't be necessary at all. But just currently not feasible. When I first came down, they, um, when I was declined or denied it, uh, one of the women, I forget what her name was in the office, she said I should just build a patio there, which would be perfectly fine if it wasn't downhill, but, so it's just, it's not, can't be done with the, just kind of the geometry of my house.
Couldn't be done with excavation, or?
I mean, I, I think my neighbors would have rather have me just build a deck versus bringing a construction crew and raise the ground eight feet in the air. It just would be more expensive for me. I don't personally think it would look as good because then there'd just be these weird blocks, then, then a hill, and then the other side of it just flat again, doesn't really, it's not, it's kind of not seamless. It would look kind of clunky and kind of ruin the aesthetic of it, which is what I'm trying to do the opposite of.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Mr. Brooks.
I was just looking up, because it seems like most of this revolves around your grill and be able to have it close to the house.
I think it's kind of the American dream, sitting out by your house and grilling.
I, I a hundred percent agree. Um, also, a couple of years ago, we lost a house nearby my house to somebody that had a grill on a porch. There's actually a state law that requires that a grill be a certain number of feet from a building or structure, so.
Do we have that amount of feet right here?
I, I'm actually looking that up because I, I was just curious about that, and I just, you know, it's, it's a safety thing, and I'm sure you don't want to visit from the fire department for any reason either, so, um.
Not burned down.
You know, so, please bear with me, but I, I, I just know that was something that happened because, I mean, this, the porch was fully engulfed by the time I heard popping and banging and, you know, obviously, the fire department had to respond and the building was a total loss, so I ju, I just wanted to caution you on that sense as well.
Forty-eight, so I don't want to be the first person to lose it.
Yep.
The, the deck you're proposing, I'm trying to understand, how, how far would it encroach upon the setback?
Um, about ten feet. So, basically, my driveway, down the middle of the driveway, it's, that's where the property line splits between me and S J at one twenty, so the line that goes around the house right now, um, is just outside of where the current deck is that enters that sunroom on the side of the house, it's not the front door, but the side door.
Yep.
And so, it would go off the side of that, which would then just make that area actually usable, because currently, it's just a, a dirt hill.
So, and you're built, proposing an eight by eight deck?
Eight by eight, yeah, so sixty-four square feet.
Okay, so, or maybe I didn't catch it right, so you're saying that your, your current house is probably approximately, I can't hold you to the exact numbers, approximately fifteen feet is probably right on the, on the line?
Yeah, it's pretty much right on the line.
So, you would go, be going into the setback by seven feet, fifteen minus eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Am I reasonable to think that?
Yeah, I think that's a perfectly fair assessment.
Mr. Fredette.
Do you share a driveway with the house on the, looking down at the aerial?
That is correct.
You do share a driveway. Now, how wide is the? How do I phrase this question? How much room is there from the edge of the, the right edge of your sunroom to the edge of the driveway where it enters your yard?
Uh, from the edge of the sunroom to the edge of the driveway, I'd say is probably, probably about fifteen feet. Again, it's on a, it's on a hill, so it's kind of tough to say because it's about fifteen feet in the air compared to the driveway, with that angle.
Thank you. Further questions for the applicant? Last comments by the applicant.
I just would really appreciate the consideration, I wanted to do this, I, I told my wife that I'd build it as a, as a wedding present, and then when I came back to the house and said that it got denied, she was pretty upset, so, yeah, I just think it would be a nice thing to do, because currently, it is kind of inconvenient to go up and down the stairs. None of the neighbors can actually see it besides the person I shared the driveway with, and she actually thought it was a good idea. The neighbors to my left, Dan Donovan and the fifteen Bumpsville Road below, they can't see the deck, and currently, they can see my rear floodlight and me using it, the grill if I, so it's actually better for them, that I kind of improves their quality of life, not having to hear me go up and down the stairs. And there used to be a, um, kind of a shed on the property, that you see that square that is on the outside of the, the variance line, and that one, when I actually ripped that down, because it was ugly metal, it made a bunch of noises, everyone actually kind of cheered as I did that, so I think my, my spirit of the ordinance, though, trying to improve the neighborhood, is there. This isn't a selfish act in any way.
I do have one more question. So, looking this up, it says ten feet from any structure. It would be more than ten feet? And that includes the, there wouldn't be any overhangs, or?
Nope, there's nothing there, it's just free space.
Okay. I, I thought it was more than ten feet, that's why I was curious on this and had to look that up, just a safety concern.
Yeah, safety's priority. I work in youth sports, so it's kind of one of the biggest things all day, so everyone's safe.
Any other questions? You're all set? Are you all set?
I'm all set, yes, thank you very much for your time.
Close the public hearing? Have a seat. Regional impact. Anyone see any regional impact?
I, I'll make a motion that this does not have regional impact. If I gotta read the whole thing, I'm just looking for.
You said to say I move a variance request does not.
Does not have potential for regional impact.
Correct. Miles Adams. Second by Mr. Hilton, discussion on it? So, the motion is that the variance request by Miles Adams is, does not have regional impact, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Five zero. Discussion. Mr. Fredette.
I'm not very good at math, I'll admit it. I don't understand how an eight-foot deck with a grill on it is ten feet away from a building, can somebody?
If you do the trigonometry, and has an existing eight-foot deck, and you go out another eight feet, that would be sixteen feet from the total width, but it'd be eight feet from the corner, but if you take triac, triangular, if you put the corner of the grill in the outside corner of the deck.
Got it.
You would potentially be, you would be ten feet away.
Got it.
Hypotenuse of the triangle. Mr. Fredette.
Again, I would say there is a little bit more of a hardship with this application than the last application because of the topography of the lot, but I think ultimately there have been other options voiced by city staff, and I can see where maybe in the longer run, those options both satisfy the ordinance and meet the criteria.
Mr. Brooks.
Well, not ideal, it looks like there's room to build towards the front as well that would not encroach the setback. Obviously, there are some shrubs there and stuff that would be in the way of it, but, you know, simply build towards the front of the building, you could essentially get the same deck without encroaching. So, um, I'm having a hard time seeing the hardship again with this one.
Nope. Sorry about that. Other discussion? Comments? Mr. Hilton wants to.
With the hardship, I was thinking as far as the, um, person, the applicant being, not being able to, or having medical issues, and also his wife having medical issues, that, I could, I remember doing the pool application, and, uh, but, you know, we, we did have, we did, um, give a variance because of medical issues, and I don't know if that is part of the hardship, and, um, part of the hardship also on this, the challenge on this property with the driveway dropping down so much, it, um, it could be, it would be an issue building a patio out there, because then they're gonna have to go down the stairs, and, um, if stairs are an issue for the family, then that would be a, that could be considered a hardship, in my opinion.
Yep, so I did look into the, the handicap hardship, which is actually referenced in table five A one, uh, as note fourteen, um, but it, unfortunately, it only specifically refers to basically ramps or similar structure to allow persons or persons with recognizable physical disability reside in the premise and maybe install within required setbacks provided all the法律 criteria are met. So, it really only addresses ramps or how to get in and out of the building and not adding on to the structure. I did look, because I had the same curiosity that you did. Mr. Fredette.
I also think, and I'm not sure how in my mind yet, but I think the concept of having that shared driveway over there adds a, a level of complexity for me for granting this. In light of the fact that by the applicant's testimony there, the abutter already has, it's tight on her side as well, and she has a structure in her side of the setback, so you're starting to really fill a tight space for access purposes.
Looking at the criteria, we always do, will diminish surrounding properties. You could probably argue either way, once you start filling in setbacks, it could affect certain properties, um, but it is far, kind of far back in the property. The variance is not contrary to public interest, I don't think it has any effect on changing the character of the neighborhood. Um, substantial justice done gives the app, gives the applicant, there's no really diminished to the general public, except maybe the, um, surround, the neighbor, the neighboring property access, but as long as they didn't build it into the driveway, they'd have no, I would say, no greater, no less, no less access, so it would be fair there. Uh, it's in the spirit of the ordinance, it, and this is, we discussed this a little bit before, now you're getting the closeness, if you have one property coming in on one side and one coming in the other, now you're changing the look of the, the property, the surrounding neighborhood by having all these structures in there. But again, we all get to the, our famous criteria number, number three, which we call the hardship criteria. We say, is there anything unique to the property? There is some, there is the slant that makes it difficult to negotiate the property, should that, does that create a hardship in applying, should, that they should be able to go into the side setback with a deck, with the idea that they would do that because they can't build a patio there? So, the second tier of the hardship criteria, is it, is it a reasonable request? This is where Mr. Brooks went into and where my, some of my questions to the applicant got into, looking for, is there a rear door? Is there another place that you could put the deck and accomplish the same task? There's no back door in the house, so you can't build a deck off the back of the house to do that, so that, that did, that didn't help the applicant, though he could build off his, I guess, a patio off his, his cellar stairs, not what he wants to do, but he could build a patio off the cellar stairs. A patio may or may not be applicable, it's kind of hard, it'd be definitely difficult. There is room to put a, a additional decking along the side of the house in front of the existing decking, which would still get that, the ten feet that's required by the fire code. Putting a deck off the front of the house kind of wouldn't look really right, I mean, probably would go into the front side setback, but I think there is, he still could put, like Mr. Brooks was pointing out, an addition toward the front of the street for the deck, so, reasonableness, is it, is it absolutely necessary? Is it the only option? No. Further discussion? Mr. Hilton?
The applicant had, he wanted to say something about moving, putting something out to the front of the house. Possible to hear from him on? Is it possible?
Yep, thanks.
Is it possible to hear from him on that? Because he was, he was wanting to say.
The board votes to open the public's, the, the, the public hearing again than we can, so you'd have to make a motion to it, to open a public hearing again, and the board would have to agree, we could just do a handful, but the board would have to agree to open a public hearing again.
Okay.
So.
I'd make the motion to.
So, what's, board thoughts on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor reopen the public hearing? One for.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Uh, so I couldn't, I couldn't build the deck in front of the current deck because I don't have a ton of yard and there's already a walkway there, and then I would have to, to make this size deck, I would have to remove a bunch of those bushes anyway, so that's, again, that just kind of takes away from some of the, kind of the aesthetic of the property if I had to remove bushes, which again, is kind of annoying, and then if I had to build it up to get to the level of the current deck, that's just, again, that's just a lot of work, that would then kind of just impede even further if we're worried about setting into the driveway, that actually adds more to that. So, then I have to take out a patio, I have to take out a walkway that I just put in, it's just, it, I don't have a ton of front yard, so I was gonna put it there, that takes up sixty-four square feet of a yard that I don't really have to begin with, so it just, I think aesthetically, it would look bad, it then makes it harder, worse on my property to have it there, and then I now have to walk through it versus just kind of having on the side, makes it a little bit more of a, a leisure area versus now it's just in a traffic pattern, which kind of defeats the purpose of it.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant on that? Mr. Brooks?
If you build the deck off to the side towards the driveway, it's gonna be at the same level as the existing one, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, it's gonna be built up off the ground anyway?
Exactly.
If we built it towards the front, it would?
Yeah, there's already, there's a walkway there, so I'd have to get rid of that, and which then makes that thing completely useless, I'd have to remove some of those bushes, which then, again, you don't want to rip up nature, and then it would look worse if it was there. And overall, it just, if you, I mean, you guys want to come over and look at the property, you would understand, it doesn't make any sense to put it there. It would look bad, it makes it.
It would look bad, it makes it, it makes it less practical. And again, it takes up some of the little bit of yard that I have.
I'll be honest, I drive by every property I consider in one of these boards because sometimes seeing it in person has a lot of impact. So, um, you know, I, I do take the opportunity to do that. I did drive by it today. Just my thought is, you know, we had a gentleman here earlier tonight that has a deck that, or a porch that wraps around the front of the building. It's not an unusual thing to do, so.
But his topography was different, he didn't have the dip. It makes that, it more, it makes it more difficult for me because of how my property is shaped. He did not have that difference, so they're similar, but not.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay? All set?
No, I appreciate you letting me open up to explain that.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing again. Discussion on the board. Mr. Forde.
Again, I'll say I'd love to be in a position that, that I think I need to grant this. Looking at the aerial photo, there are tons of lots right in this area that are exactly the same size. I, I just, I don't think as much as I wish I could reason through it. I don't think there's a way that this meets the hardship criteria to the bar necessary to grant this.
Other comments, discussion? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Forde.
After review of the application, the file and all of the information presented to the board, I feel that the hardship criteria has not been satisfied. And I move at the request of Miles Adams for a variance from table five dot A dot one to allow the construction of a deck located within the fifteen foot side setback on a property located at one eighteen Hill, Indigo Hill Road be denied.
Motion to his second. Second by Mr. Brooks, discussion on the motion. Okay, the motion is to deny the variance. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion, variance is not, is denied. Thank you. Any other new business come before the board? Yeah, Mrs. Crosley.
No new business.
No new business. I'll let you think on that a second. Anything from the board? New business, Mr. Hilton. Oh, Mr. Hilton, like to make most of adjourn to his second, second by Mr. Brooks. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.